Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 26th, 2024 meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee. I call this meeting to order. Mr. James Walsh, will you lead us in the sleight to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, I ask at this time that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. And we do, we do, we'll do public comment after we do the school committee reports?
Yes.
Okay, great. We will do public comment after school committee reports. So we have school committee member and student reports, the school committee chair report, there is no report at this time, and reports of the resource subcommittee. Mr. Stevens?
Resource Subcommittee and School Building Needs Subcommittee are meeting tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow meeting, thank you very much. The policy subcommittee meeting?
We are meeting on Wednesday night with the Mass Association of School Committee.
Yes, that'll be a good one. Thank you. Student Support Subcommittee?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Very good. And the School Personnel Subcommittee, there is no report at this time. Now, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular school committee.
Student reps.
Oh, we have the student reps. I missed that. I am sorry. Student Representative Reports?
The FHS Student Council is preparing a school pep rally in March to uplift spirits during MCAS. The FHS Spring Musical has officially been cast. Performances are on the 11th, 12th, and 13th of April, so mark your calendars. And additional news about drama, Fitchburg High's Drama Club is also entering the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild competition this Saturday, so wish them luck. FHS Spring Sports signups have been posted, so if you're interested, make sure to sign up. Ice skating at the Wallace Civic Center was a successful event, many families attended.
Along with that, Wrangled is still having their first annual tiny art show on March 8th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Back to the approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meetings from January 8th and February 5th. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second to approve? All approved?
Aye.
All right. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have communications? No communications? No communications at this time? Okay, we have public comment. I invite anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to please approach the podium. Identify yourself by name and address or city of residence, and identify the agenda item on which you'd like to speak, and then you may speak on it for no more than five minutes.
Jaclyn Wedgey, Fitchburg resident, speaking on Agenda Items 6, 7, and 8. Parents and guardians are very busy, and if they take the time to come down here, you should listen to them. We don't have public schools to employ administrators or teachers but to educate students, and no one safeguards their interests better than their parents. Even if you can't respond to things like personnel matters, you can still listen. Precedent with our school committee has been to allow comment on any topic. For instance, one day there was a lockdown at Fitchburg High. That same day, there was a school committee meeting, so there was not time to put it on the agenda, but students and parents came and spoke about the lockdown. The Human Rights Commission has a de facto practice of allowing comment on anything, until recently, the Fitchburg Housing Authority did also. There is no law forbidding open-ended comment. It is just your committee procedures. I was very angry watching your last meeting and seeing you tell parents they can't speak, and even calling up a police officer to falsely claim a man was disorderly and threaten to forcibly remove him from the meeting. You cited your rules, yet did not follow open-meeting law requirements yourselves. Again, you're getting on someone else's case over a local procedure, but yourselves are breaking a state law. Since then, your committee has also failed to respond correctly to the open-meeting law complaint. Instead of pointing at the moat in someone else's eye, you should consider the beam in your own eye. As a city looks at renovations to Monument Park, we should remember that the best way to honor the 135 Fitchburg residents who died in the Civil War is not with a piece of stone, but in our everyday lives to fulfill the vision of their commander-in-chief, that government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth. It is for us the living to ensure that everyone has a voice in our government. And speaking of everyone being represented and having a voice, I hope the Crocker Elementary School Gym dedication isn't going to name another building in our diverse city after an old white man. And I approve and applaud the appointment of Glenda Cologne.
Thank you. Are there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, I'm happy to be able to invite Sally Cragan up to the podium for the annual Dog License Poster Contest winners. And she is joined by our art teacher at Crocker, Kelly Morrison. Welcome.
Thank you. So it is great to be here. I'm going to say we've been doing this for five years, Madam Mayor. Is that about right?
That sounds about right.
Yeah, I think we started, it was around 2018, and that means that literally thousands of children at this point have created designs. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Morrison just to talk about the process. We got over 800 entries. The majority were from Crocker and McKay. It was great to have them, but you've actually, because you've been doing this for a while, kids are a little bit familiar with the process.
Oh, and Counselor Cragan, we started in 2018, and it's six years. We skipped 2021, so six years.
Okay, so this is, this is year seven, then?
Year seven, six years of it, because of 2021.
Thank you. COVID. COVID.
Thank you so much for having us here for this. I want to thank Mrs. Cragan and all of you for this opportunity. The kids truly, truly enjoy creating art around their pets and doing this important civil duty work. Every year, they ask me about it, are we going to do the dog contest? And I tell them, yes, of course. And most, most years, I need to do a lesson to teach what a license is and that sort of thing. This year, I didn't need to. We just had a nice discussion through it. The kids taught the other kids who may not know. We all know dogs don't drive cars and have licenses for that reason, but why licenses are important.
They might be better than some people who do drive.
Yes.
For another night.
Yeah. So it takes a couple of weeks, but I think it's really a great investment in our city and in our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
So how we do this is the mayor has citations, and we're going to, as I mentioned to our audience of artists, we're going to invite you up, and you're welcome to, please hold up your, your picture so that everyone here can see. And then I think we'll have you maybe walk over to the mayor and receive your, receive your citation, and then go back to your seat. Or actually, no, if we have them line up, and then, and then they'll, and then we'll be, then we'll do a picture.
Perfect.
Right after. And I think that'll be great. So we're starting with our honorable mentions. All right, could we see, and we're going to share this, our first honorable mention goes to Athena Barnett, 3rd grade. Athena, yay.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
We'd like to see the picture.
Let's see your poster.
Yeah, see the poster before.
Oh, I love that. Very nice.
Show the audience, too.
Yeah.
What does that say?
All dogs. Loved.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah, very good.
Read. Oh, boy, Jonathan.
Lexi Mercado, 3rd grade.
All the dogs?
Are people here?
All right, and our next honorable mention, again, these are all Crocker students. Cameron Higgins-Suan, and Cameron, if you start your journey to the, walk over there, show all our school committee people your picture, and then you'll end up in the center. Okay, we'd also like to make note that Jatniel Guzman Rivera, a 2nd grader, also will receive his honorable mention at Crocker School. Two more, we have from McKay Campus School, Tatiana Giles. Giles? Giles. All right.
Nice. And another student from McKay, Gabriela Garcia, in 5th grade.
Our audience will notice, or will note, please, that there's a wide variety of styles, artistic styles, of colors. The drawings that everyone really loved were just so clear, and all of you are very clear artists in terms of your vision. And let's do a round of applause. Wait, one sec. Would you like to do the honors?
Yes. Yes. Our winner from Crocker School is Angel Garcia, in the 5th grade.
Angel, do we have his, his poster? Oh, my goodness. Here we go.
We'd like to see it, Mia.
Can we see that?
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry, Angel's a poster.
That is awesome. That is awesome.
Very good, Angel. Excellent.
I will say this to all of our honorable mention winners, everyone's a winner. Everyone who entered is, is, is a winner, but he was an honorable mention last year. And then, exactly. So we do this for kids, I think it's age 6 to 12, and I look forward to next year, but this year is pretty awesome. And now, we'd like to say, please, parents and family members, if you guys can get nice and, hold your, hold your drawings up, because this, this is the photo that we want to get out there on the social media, so just take a moment. Come on, come on down, so you don't get the backs of our heads. All right, one last round of applause for these really amazing artists.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Okay, my next item this evening is school committee recognition. So this evening, so this evening, we are here to recognize three individuals for their dedicated service to the students of Fitchburg. Our former mayor, Stephen D. Natale, Mr. Aidan Horgan, and Mr. Thomas Hughes. Come on up. So please have a seat in the two chairs.
Oh, we're sitting in the chairs?
Please, please. It looks like Mr. Horgan, he did say he was coming. He may be a little late, but we'll move forward. On behalf of the Fitchburg Public School District, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation for your dedicated service as members of the school committee. Your unwavering commitment to the betterment of education in our community has left a memorable mark. Former mayor Stephen D. Natale, your 12 years of service have been marked by leadership and tireless advocacy for the students and families of Fitchburg. Mr. Aidan Horgan, your six years of dedicated service have contributed significantly to the growth and success of our schools. Mr. Thomas Hughes, in your two years on the committee, your passion and commitment have made a meaningful impact. As you've transitioned from your roles, please know that your contributions have made a lasting difference in the lives of our students and the overall quality in educa, of education in the Fitchburg Public Schools. Your legacy of service will be remembered with gratitude. Thank you for your time, energy, and dedication to the Fitchburg Public School District. Thank you. We've got a small token of our appreciation. Former mayor Dina Tally, thank you. Miss Hughes.
Glad to have Fitchburg company.
So if you want to open your, your gift and show everyone?
Steve, don't ever write.
It took some time to get in. I just wanted to do this in December, but it took some time to.
Nice, you got it? Nice.
Nice.
Very nice. Well deserved.
Hey, you stoned male.
Put a photo up with your. That's what, that's what the historian has told me, oh, yes. Mayor? Mayor? Anyone else like to join us? Please come.
Do we go? That'll be good, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, do I want to squeeze in for a photo?
Who are we looking at?
Say cheese. All set.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
School Gym by former physical education teacher, Michael Burke. This evening, I am presenting a request from Principal Casey Bolak and the Crocker Elementary School Council to name the new Crocker Elementary School Gymnasium after Michael Burke. Mr. Burke was the first physical education teacher when Crocker School opened the doors in 1964, and served in the role for 37 years before he retired in 2002. During that time, he made a, he made a positive impact on many students' lives in Fitchburg. This evening, Mr. Burke's daughter, Diane, is joining us to share some information about her dad and answer any questions people may have. Please join us.
Thank you very much for inviting me tonight. I came here today to request that the school committee vote in favor of naming and dedicating the new Crocker Elementary School Gymnasium after my father, Michael J. Burke. My father was the first physical education teacher when Crocker School first opened its doors in 1964, and served in that role for 37 years before he retired in 2002. During that time, he made a positive impact on hundreds, if not thousands, of children in Fitchburg. He also spent many years coaching some of those same children and many others in high school as Fitchburg High School's football and baseball coach. My father passed away unexpectedly, December 28th, 2017. Since his passing, I, as well as my family, have heard from so many people about my dad and what a great teacher, mentor, coach, role model, colleague, and just the really great man he was. We hear stories about how he taught them not only about sports and fitness, but also about the importance of hard work, and respect, and dedication, and honesty, and integrity. I got to witness this firsthand as Mr. Burke, my dad, was my gym teacher for four years. I may be a bit biased, seeing that I am his daughter, but I believe he deserves to be recognized for the years of dedication to the children of Fitchburg, and the true joy he felt going to that school each day for 37 years. When I heard that they were going to build a new Crocker School, my mind went immediately to the gym being named after him. For me, it seemed like the perfect way to permanently honor the lasting impact he made to the children of Fitchburg, and I hope you agree. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So I'm leaving this to you, school committee. This requires a vote from the school committee based on our policies. I will leave this for you for the week to consider, and I will have an action item on the next school committee's agenda for a vote on March 4th, which is next week, on Monday. We have two meetings back to back, so.
So before I, my comments, so we can't vote on it tonight?
If you would want to make a motion for that, I think you can.
Okay.
As a.
I just, I'd just like to say something. I've exchanged emails with Diane in the past couple of months, and I've also spoken with Mr. Pappas a few times at where I work, at the hardware store. But I also talked to my wife, Beth, who, for many people watching here today, back in 1964, most of the kids went to neighborhood schools up through the 6th grade. It was elementary school, junior high, and then high school. My wife went to Goodrich Street School, and when she finished 5th grade, four students from Goodrich were allowed to go to the new Crocker School the second year that it was open. And Beth had your dad as her gym phys ed teacher in 1965, and she said she thought he was the very best. And one of the things that she stressed many times is, is that he included everyone. He didn't just focus on the kids who were very athletic or maybe jocks, but he, he made sure that everyone was a part of a game, an activity, or an exercise. And I think that is something that every student and parent wants and appreciates for their kids and is expected in every teacher in our school. So I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we name the new gymnasium, name the gymnasium at the new Crocker School, the Michael J. Burke Gymnasium.
Second. We have a motion and second to name the gymnasium at Crocker Elementary School after Michael Burke. On the motion, I would just like to add that I went to Crocker Elementary School, and Mr. Burke was my gym teacher. And I, I don't just remember, however, you know, climbing the ropes and playing with the rings that hang from the ceiling of the gym and doing your standard gym things, but also, Mr. Burke dedicated his time to teach chess club at Crocker Elementary. And I don't know how I got into chess club, I was young, but he donated his, he not only dedicated his time, but he donated his materials to buy those time clocks, and the, the chess boards, and the, the notepads to learn that you got to mark your moves. And I learned so much about chess from Mr. Burke during that time, and you know, it really just, I appreciated that so much.
If I could add?
Ms. Jeffrey?
I worked with Mike for years, and when I came to Crocker, he had already been there for several years. But he had that contagious love of teaching that I just held on to. And to see the way he interacted, like you said, with all, and he had the, they roller skated, square danced, but not just the students, Mike did too. And it was great. Kids couldn't wait to get to gym class. And he went above and beyond with the chess club, also helping teachers that needed any help. I mean, I can remember with me, with my election program, you know, we had a voter registration night at Crocker, and of course, I was in the classroom meeting parents, and not as many parents would go to the specialists. I'll be on the table for you. I'll get people registered. And it was just, he volunteered. I didn't ask. You didn't have to ask Mike. He did. And I have so much respect to this day for that man. So this would be a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Just a couple of quick comments. First, I played ball with Mike. We were friends for many, many years. My three children all went to Crocker School for six years, all had Mike, all adored him. My wife taught at Crocker School and worked with him. But the Burke family are just contributors to Fitchburg. Mike's father was also a city counselor, Councilor Burke. He was also, Mike and I played for his father in the Blackstone Valley League Baseball. It was just a, a great, great feeling. And I'd like to tell one quick story of playing baseball with Mr. Burke. We were playing at St. Bernard's, and we were playing West Boylston in the Blackstone, Blackstone Valley League, and I got up to the plate, and the score was tied, and I hit a three-run homerun. We were ahead, 3 to 0. I come around, and I'm happy, and the inning's over, and he looked at me, and he said, Pete, you're on the bench. I said, what? He said, you missed the sign, the take sign. So unless you're a coach or player, you understand what that was. So I wholeheartedly support this, and thank you for bringing it up for tonight, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a recommendation from the school committee for the dedication of the Crocker Elementary School Gym to Michael Burke. Can we, do we have, how about we do a roll call vote?
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
With all the beautiful biography? Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. England?
Yes.
All unanimous?
Thank you. Thank you.
So Diane, once the school is opened, I will be in contact so we can schedule a time to schedule a dedication ceremony, okay? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is our district math update. During the next several months, school committee, we will be, we will be having presentation, presentations from our directors and department heads showcasing the work happening in the Pittsburgh Public Schools for teaching and learning. Tonight, we have our first presentation focusing on our math department. Please welcome our math curriculum director, Tammy Chandler. Hi, Tammy. Yeah, I think you can hook it up right there, Tammy. Tammy, you can either stand there or you can sit at the table. It's completely up to you.
What would be easier?
I don't know.
All right. And then I think we can do, again, I just want to make sure that, yep, and I just, that showed me how to do this.
You're good?
I think so.
All right.
I think so, all right. Hi, everyone. My name is Tammy Chandler, and if you have not met me, I've actually been a educator in the city of Pittsburgh for the past 22 years. I started off as a sixth-grade self-contained teacher at BF Brown and then moved, when we merged with Academy, to Long Joe Middle School. I worked there as a seventh-grade teacher, a sixth-grade teacher, and then I moved into, as a district instructional coach. This will be my third year as a curriculum director, so a lot of working with the team. We moved into, as you know, four directors, actually five. So I work with a wonderful team of a social studies, math, ELA, science, and unified arts, and now we have social emotional learning. So I'd like to share a little bit of what we've done, but I am also going to have you engage in a math task so that you can experience with some of our students. I know, all right. So that's kind of where we are with that. So part of the instructional vision for us in the math department is taking the NCTM teaching practices. That's part of our teacher learning. And our student learning is around the standards of math practice. What we've done as directors is really look at how all of our content connects and the commonalities among the practices of science, math, ELA, and social studies. And that gray area, that's the common area for us, where we want to build a strong base knowledge through content and rich texts. We want to read, write, and speak grounded in evidence, and then construct viable arguments and critique reasoning of others and engage in argument from evidence. This is a little bit of our data, and I apologize because Galileo does it differently, but I did want to share a little bit from this year. We, our students engage in an eye-ready diagnostic, fall, winter, and spring. Our Great Minds Eureka Squared curriculum, we test by topic and by module. And then our Galileo is a program that we use that is a summative prior to MCAS. So we've been really choosing some standards that historically we may have fallen below on and try and see where we are. When I came here to this position, using my experience in the classroom, I'm also a parent of two graduates of Pittsburgh High, so just using a little bit of what I knew as a teacher and a coach, knew that we were going to start at the top and support our K through two, our transition classrooms. So we started the high school with a lot of our work so that we could build some of those standards of math practices in the classrooms at our high school level. We also partnered with Amy Lusenta and Grace Kelmanek, Routines for Reasoning. They're authors of two books. We've been partnering them now with them for three years. Actually started with Jeremy Roach. Talked to him the summer before I got into this position. And Amy and Grace worked with the SWIFT Plan through the Pittsburgh High, and we wanted to make sure that whatever we did with them, that we could look through each of the classrooms and get data that way. So not only around the math content, but also what was happening with our students through student discourse. So since our initial learning walk of September of 2021, we've seen an increase of focus of student talk. So not just teacher-student, but student-to-student discourse and class structure around discourse This is a little bit of what we've been using. We did update our math curriculum, K through high school, Eureka Math Squared through Great Minds, so it's accessible, it's engaging, coherent, and it's rigorous. All right, you ready for a math task? Yes, okay. So we are going to engage in a contemplate and calculate. You guys are free? Yes, okay. All right.
Can I interrupt for just one second? This isn't one of the things, it's responsibility of the school committee, so I'm just making that clear from the beginning, all right?
I was told, Mr. Walsh, that you would be the first one to answer the question.
All right, okay, I'll do my best.
All right, Mr. Walsh, why don't you tell us what the what is to this routine?
Count efficiently by chunking, changing the form, connecting to the math you know.
Yes.
So, oh.
That, so that's the what of what we're doing.
Right.
And what's the why? Who wants to read the why? Why are we going to do this task? Yes? Go ahead, Mrs. Reynolds.
Why? To think as mathematicians, use mathematical structure to find counting shortcuts.
Yeah. So sometimes in math, we think it's all about just getting the answer, but it's about thinking, and that's what mathematicians do. They think about structure, and they think about where they've seen it and patterns, and how they can use it for shortcuts. All right? Okay. So what we're going to do, and these are some of the same routines that had, there are many routines. You're going to see a little snippet of video from a classroom, but for the case of what we're doing now, I'm going to show you a figure, and I'm going to give you two seconds, and I'm just wanting you to think about what you notice. Not counting the dots, I just want you to think about what you notice and any structures that you see. And then I'm going to give you time to turn and talk to your neighbor, so you'll notice the little icons on top. The students know that means I'm going to turn and talk to my neighbor, and then you're going to share with each other any shortcuts. And then at the end, we're going to reflect on learning. I do want to let you know that this is normally a 20, 25 minutes. I'm going to do it quick, so we're going to cut a little bit of it. But we're not going to get rid of the math, okay? So I'm going to show you a visual, just a couple seconds.
Excuse me.
Okay, and I want you to ask yourself what might be mathematically important. Okay, take a minute, talk to your neighbor. What did you notice?
Oh.
It was symmetrical.
I didn't know that.
I think it was symmetrical, so, yes.
The design. Yes.
It was. I noticed a block of dots.
And they can be connected to find...
Up and lower, and left and right.
What, we noticed the symmetry.
I like it. Is that what you like? There's a, no, are you smarter than Long Joe Middle School? I can't, I was like, actually, wait, there you go.
All right. So I'm just going to drop down a couple noticings that you have before I show you the next. So for the sake of time, what are a couple noticings you'd like to share? I'm going to say I forgot symmetry. I've got to remember some symmetry. Someone else?
Dots?
Dots?
Design.
Design. Pattern. The area. Hey, great.
Area.
Some area. All right, okay, good. So now with your partner, you're going to use a noticing to develop an efficient strategy to find the total number of circles. We're not counting them, thinking of what you noticed and what are some structures or some shortcuts that you could get to figure out the total number there, okay?
Square.
Okay.
Three by three. Three by three. Two on the sides, one on the, one of the top of the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
There's seven that go across the middle, and five go across top of the bottom.
All right. Now you notice the icon on the right. We're not having any of our students write. They're doing all their thinking in their head and thinking about different ways that they can solve this, well, to find shortcuts or come up with the total. So now we're going to share and study our shortcuts. There are two sentence frames here we want to be using. So whoever decides to do the first one, the presenter, you're going to be using "we noticed so we," so that's your new partner, or "we knew so we." And then I'm going to ask for someone else to repeat or rephrase what they said, and then I'll annotate on here. So who would like to tell us what you noticed? Would you like to tell me what you noticed? Would? Okay. So go ahead. I'm going to be your pointer, so when you tell us what you noticed, I'll...
I noticed that there's like, if you're looking at the square...
So you...
I noticed that.
Okay?
I noticed, written diagram doesn't match the diagram on the TV.
Oh, that's totally planned. Anything else that you noticed? I can fix that one. One more.
Oh.
Is that right? Nope?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you. All right. Who would like to repeat? Athena? Who would like to repeat what Athena noticed?
Would you say it again, Athena, a little louder?
I noticed that there's an experimental thing.
Square in the middle?
Would like to repeat that. Using our sentence frames.
We noticed a big square in the middle, so we times three by three.
Okay. Okay, now what did you do after you did the three by three to get the total?
I skipped counted.
Skipped counted?
Yeah.
Everyone see that?
We can't see that.
Is that how you presented it up? So three times three is nine. Is that right?
Yes.
Did someone do it differently? Someone think of it differently?
I started the same way as Athena and thought three by three is nine, and then I just counted the additional dots and added six.
Is that what you were thinking?
One, 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 one.
And did it come up with the same total?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
I did, I did four on the top, times two, plus seven.
You did?
I did four. There were three plus one on the top, times two, plus seven.
Right?
That's what I did.
Okay? And you want to?
I saw a pattern. To the top one, always the bottom one.
Yep.
And I added two.
Oh, here, and then here, here?
I added two.
Okay? And then the big one, four.
I saw a three times three in the box, but then I saw two and one for another three and two and one for another three.
Okay. So if we stayed in this moment, how many do you think we'd actually come up with? Many different ways of solving it. And so what that means and what these routines do is they allow all of us to build our confidence, think of structures, come back to different problems, and think of different patterns. And so it gives us an opportunity in the classroom to feel like there's not just one right answer. That's what mathematical thinkers do. Okay? That wasn't too bad, right, Mr. Walsh?
No, that was...
Okay, good. So a little bit about reflecting on the learning. The very end is very important here, and when we bring this into the classrooms, the students have an opportunity to choose one of these, and surprisingly enough, they all choose a different one to reflect on. And so we give them a few minutes to choose one, and then they will share out. So to find a shortcut, I may look for patterns. I heard someone say, "I look for patterns." Someone might say, "I know that if I skip count, I'll be able to get the side," things like that. So it's a great formative for us as educators as well. So this was the contemplate and calculate, what you were engaged in, this task. And all of this comes from the two books that we adopted, Teaching, Routines for Reasoning, Teaching for Thinking, and the three critical shifts for a thinking classroom that the coaches, myself, and the teachers are using, our focus on thinking. What's a way that you focused on thinking tonight? Did you just solve something? You actually had to think about patterns and structure. Stepping out of the middle was something that I did. Did you focus on thinking? Stepping out of the middle is something that we do as teachers, so I'm not just asking a question, you're answering, asking a question. It's a chance to allow the students to have student-to-student discourse and to learn from each other, and then supporting that productive struggle that we can go through, and our brains are going to hurt a little bit. We tell the kids if our brain's hurt, it builds a little bit of muscle. The five essential strategies, we used a couple of them tonight, is we want the kids to ask yourself questions. So when they are in a situation where they don't have one of us or they don't have a neighbor, they're asking, they're thinking about some of the routines and the structures that they used, they're asking themselves questions. Where have we seen this before? There, I was annotating, and obviously not in great colors, using a highlighter, but I was annotating so that we can show different ways using different colors. We were using sentence frames to repeat and rephrase in the four Rs to hear from each other. And then we're asking you to turn and talk to your neighbor, and that was an opportunity for me as the teacher tonight to walk around and hear and listen, and that's a great assessment in itself of where each one of you were. The three read we've been using in the elementary, actually all three, but the elementary has really been using this, so instead of reading a problem and solving it, it's about reading it three times, one without the problem at all and really thinking about the gist. Many of them are doing the hashtag to figure out the gist and then going through and solving it. So it's reading to solve, reading to understand, not to solve. That one took a little bit. So the decide and defend, this one is, goes with the standards of math practice. The students are given, I'm going to show you this clip, but the other one I'll explain. So the students are given a piece of work, and they're deciding whether it's right or wrong, they're a skeptic, or they're having to defend their answer. So this is Roberta McMaster. She's a ninth-grade teacher at Pittsburgh High. Okay. So we're going to start by interpreting some work of somebody else's. From there, we're going to decide if we think the work is correct or incorrect. After we make that decision, we draft up a defense. Then we're going to defend that to skeptics, and after that, we'll have some time to reflect on the process that we went through today. Okay, so you want to ask yourself for about a minute, what was a question that the student was answering here? And after that, we'll have some time to reflect on the process that we went through today. Okay? So you want to ask yourself for about a minute, what was a question that the student was answering here?
Oh, in order to convince the skeptics, you should show them this of your clip and be ready to answer questions.
To answer questions. Right? That's important. You don't want to just come up and give your defense. You want to be ready to answer questions people might have about your defense. You want to be really confident in. And I think, was that your show that was saying you should be confident in your? So again, we're building some confidence when we're thinking about different ways of solving it. We're hearing about another person's thinking and how they might solve it. And we might consider those ways of solving math in a different way. Connecting reps is similar, except that we have a situation and we have an expression and they can match which one with one that's empty to come up with an expression that matches that. So some highlights from when, since 2021, when the directors and the curriculum team came together is we have put a pre-K scope and sequence together. We're starting to do screeners with our K through two, fall, winter, and spring students just to get an idea of where they are. We have a Math Connections that's funded by Title I, grades one through eight. Like I said earlier, our district math is Great Minds, Eureka Squared. Our high school, we've made some adjustments to the senior electives. We're pretty excited about this. We've gone from math modeling to quantitative reasoning. We've put in two personal finance electives, some statistical reasoning in sports, application of math in healthcare. We've had some visitors come to the mathematics in healthcare, some outside providers working with the students. We're in the process of working with both Mount Wachusett and Pittsburgh State University to see how some of these courses can maybe transfer over. And then we have our Math Connections also at the high school. We have this professional development with Amy and Grace and learning labs that include our school leaders, our teachers, and our math coaches. We have a pre-algebra course with our current seventh graders right now. There are four sections in our middle school and that was open to all of our students and families who have opted in. So we'll be meeting to see, with the high school, to see how and what kind of tests we'll take with an opportunity to possibly take algebra in eighth grade. And then our instructional coaches continue to support our tier-one classrooms. What's next? We're actually partnering right now with Pittsburgh State, Dr. Barbado. She's been visiting our high school classrooms and our professional development to see what can be done at the university to help our students. She wants to look at our math placement. She wants to look at some of the content and pedagogy and kind of ease the students' transition from high school to college. We have two algebra teachers right now that are participating in the National Science Foundation-funded research around practice-driven professional development. We're piloting and reviewing geometry. So I'll be back here in May to share that with you. And then we'll be revisiting the K through two because we know that there's an opportunity in our early childhood to really strengthen that math. And we'll just continue to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our students in Pittsburgh. Sharing our Pittsburgh story. We have visited and shared our story outside of Pittsburgh. So in the fall, I was able to present in Washington DC at the NCSM conference and that included school districts from all around the country, including other countries. And we just got approved, myself and Julie Keefe, to present at the Breaking Barriers in Chicago and that's the connection with ELA. And Justin, Alex, and Becky Colo just are going to be presenting at the Atman Conference in the spring at Holy Cross. Our families, we have math nights that are funded by Title I and all of our curriculum does a nice job of having family math resources as well as pieces that will support any work at home and any scaffolds and any support that's needed there. And I would like to end with two student perspectives for you.
The Connecting Reps is one of my favorite ones because it helps me look at the wrong and the correct in people's work. And even if I got it right or wrong, it helped me show how to like do the steps. And when I did the steps over again and I looked at the Connecting Reps who showed me all the stuff I keep messing up on, Connecting Reps showed me what I messed up on in every problem. And yeah, and when I got it wrong, it helped. Yeah, it helped me show what I got wrong. When I got it right, it just showed me I was doing the right steps and the teachings was right when I matched it up and I was doing exact step for step for step. Yeah, and another one I still liked was Decide and Defend because it helped me look at everybody in the class and what they were talking about, what they did right and what they did wrong. It just helped us because we're talking with everybody and everyone was getting involved. And it just helped with the whole class knowing what to do and helped me know what to do also.
Nice. How is Decide and Defend the same or different from a typical class?
Decide and Defend is different, I would say, because in the regular typical class, it's usually just a couple of people answering like the answer or doing the work. But in Decide and Defend, it feels like everyone's like more involved and knowing what to do and separate from regular classes.
All right. And when you're engaged in that Decide and Defend routine, looking at someone else's work around solving inequalities, how did that help you understand the ideas?
It helped me understand because, to be honest, I usually like in class, I'll usually get the work right. But in Decide and Defend, I'll get it wrong because I'll miss those little tiny steps that we have to do before we solve the equation. And that's what it would usually mess me up on. But after I usually did the Decide and Defend and we worked on the problems more and more, I would get it more right after I did Decide and Defend than before I did the Decide and Defend.
Last one is JT.
All right, JT. You've been doing some work with some of the routines for reasoning and math classes here. Which one is your favorite and why?
I like Decide and Defend. I just feel like it's more participation. Be able to work with your partner more and like their ideas, your ideas, like we can command them, you know, and we all talk about it. We all defend our answer and see other people's opinion on the problem.
Nice.
Yeah.
How is Decide and Defend the same or different from a typical class?
Uh, like a regular class, like there's usually like a couple of kids answering questions and then like Decide and Defend, like everybody's answering or like everybody's engaged, like raising their hand and stuff like that.
Nice. Um, when you engaged in routine, Decide and Defend, looking at someone else's work around solving inequalities, how did that help you understand the ideas?
Uh, just like seeing other people's work, like changed my perspective on the problem. Like at first I had my own idea and I thought like my answer was right. But like seeing other people's like answers kind of changed my perspective like about what I first thought about that like answer.
Nice. Uh, anything else you want to say about the routines that you've been doing?
No, Decide and Defend is my favorite one.
Thanks, thanks.
And that's their perspective. So I think being able to shift our math classrooms a little bit, so there's a little bit more thinking, a little bit of a chance to be able to share our ideas and to just allow our students to have student-to-student discourse and step out of the middle will help as we move forward in math in Pittsburgh.
I was just going to say that Decide and Defend is a skill that I think is applicable in almost any class and in life to be prepared to present and kind of anticipate what you might ask. Why did you do that? And I think it's not just learning math, but it's learning to speak in public, defend your position. And I like the fact that, I was in grammar school a long time ago and usually you had worksheets and you didn't.
Right.
You didn't communicate, you didn't work together. And I think it's nice that, as both of them said, to be able to look at what, how the other person got to the answer a different way than I got to the answer and maybe their way was a little easier, made more sense. And I think that's a nice way to, for people to learn and to remember as opposed to just sit and just do it yourself and not have any input from anybody else, especially from peers.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think remembering, again, I'll go back to how I started, how we can connect all of our content and our students are doing that in all the other contents, to be able to have conversations together and to just really have opportunities to discuss and not just about a right or wrong answer. And math is important for a student voice.
Any other questions for Mrs. Chandler?
Thank you and thank you to the math departments.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chandler.
Thank you so much. Great work.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Oh, yes, Rosemary.
Has this, do you also have traditional math, let's call it? This I would call like development of critical thinking. Yeah, which is.
So that's what happens with the Great Minds. So there'll be a part where there's a launch, there's student-to-student discourse, there's a chance to talk to my partner. But there's also an opportunity for that independent work, which is important. So they can apply it on their own. And that's where, a little bit where that productive struggle comes in so that they really are thinking about the conversations they had and some of the tools and the strategies that they used. So there is definitely time where they have to apply it on their own. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Chandler, for what you do for the students at Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you to our little helpers over here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chandler.
Thank you.
So Mrs. Chandler, like I said, was the first director to come and present their content in their department. So we'll have presentations at our next meetings from all the directors sharing the teaching and learning happening in all of our departments. So I think that's important. That's what we're here for, right? We're here to teach kids. So you should be aware of exactly what's happening in our classrooms, okay?
Nice, I appreciate it.
All right. Our last item for this evening is a quick overview. Thank you, Ms. Chandler. Our quick, high-level overview of the FY25 budget. So where are we for next year, okay? Mr. Roach and I will give you a high-level overview tonight on where we are with our budget. Just so you know, on January 24th, the governor released the budget and we will be sharing Pittsburgh's budget forecast for FY25. So again, high level. In addition to that, we also will be sharing kind of the process that we will take over, you know, participate in over the next several weeks to actually come to you in May with a finalized budget for you to vote on, okay? So that's what tonight we'll be doing. So, so I'm going to, hold on one second. All right, there we go. Oops. All right. So where are we? So like I said, on January 24th, the governor released their budget. Over the last few months, Mr. Roach has met with all our school administrators to actually talk to them about the individual school budget presentations that they'll be coming to central office. So Mr. Roach developed a template for every school to begin their budget presentation. So he met with them and went over them. And then in March, every principal will be coming to meet with Cabinet, which is myself and my district-level administrators, to actually recommend their budget for FY25. So over the next three weeks, we'll be actually meeting with every principal to go over their budget and what they feel that they need for next year. So that will be happening in the next three weeks. And then we'll have all recommendations for you as a school committee team on April 1st. All right? So that's the work that we'll be doing over the next month, really talking to our principals in addition to our department heads to figure out exactly what they need moving into next year, okay? On here, two on the left, is the actual budget timeline for the year. So as you can see, we are here on the 27th of February giving you a kind of brief overview of where we are. I'm sorry, the 26th, it's actually on there. 27th tomorrow, we'll be giving this, I'm sorry, the Resource Subcommittee a very similar presentation on where we are at this point in the development of our budget. Then in March, like I said, we'll be going over with our principals, their kind of wish lists for the budget for next year for their schools. Then on February 4th, we actually moved this up a little bit for tonight, but we will be giving you some more budget information next Monday. Then after that, on the 18th, we hope to actually give you a little bit of an update on where we are with our school-based budgets. The 20th, I'm sorry, I can't see that far, the 26th.
It's so small.
We will re-engage our Resource Subcommittee to review our budget requests. And then we'll be back here on the 1st to kind of give you a really in-depth overview on the asks from our administrators for their budget for FY25. We'll have another Resource Subcommittee on the 9th of April. Then we'll be here on April 22nd to actually do a first reading of our recommended budget for next year. Again, we'll then go back to the Resource Subcommittee and review our recommendations and make changes. And then you'll be asked to vote on a final budget on May 6th at 6:00 p.m. Okay? So this is where we are right now in the budget development process. So in the next month, we'll be really working with our administrators to develop a budget for next year. So I am now going to hand it over to Mr. Roach. Mr. Roach will now be going in-depth on kind of where we are with the forecast for next year for our budget, okay? Mr. Roach?
May I ask a question before Mr. Roach starts?
Yes.
Okay. For the federal and the private grants that we receive, do we have a compliance committee that gets together, you know, at the different schools so that the budgets that were received at the school and the funds were used for whatever they were supposed to be used for so that when they prepare a new budget, they know that they already used the funds that were provided by the grants to do whatever they were, you know, supposed to do so that they don't have to double up and asking for that same amount of money? Did I say too much?
Nope, nope, you're right. So that being said, so whenever we apply for a grant, Dr. Knight, it's a really important question. We are actually audited several times a year to make sure that we, whenever we applied for a grant, they come in and make sure that we are actually spending that money as we said we were going to spend it on.
For both federal and private?
Yep.
Yeah.
We can't, if we actually have to make a change in how we use those funds, we actually have to get their approval from the department that issued that grant before we actually can make any changes. So there is checks and balances for all grant funds that we spend.
And not that I'm trying to give anyone more work. I'm just concerned about when it's time to sign off, I have to sign these things and if I don't sign it, I'm still equally responsible. I want to have a better understanding of what's going on.
Yep. So that happens on a yearly basis. We get audited on all our grants on a yearly basis to make sure that we're.
Do we ever get a sheet of papers that everything went well with the audits so that we know, oh, okay, all the grants that we got were used for the reasons why we applied for those grants?
I don't know if we ever get a.
So, so, you know, because I don't know.
If we ever get a piece of paper saying that, Mr. Roach?
I think what happens is if you did something incorrectly.
They'll make us correct.
You're immediately noted, that's noted immediately, you have to fix it.
Yep.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Maybe, help me to question, body of question is when we have our regular budget, school department budget, and there are line items, right? And if we want to make a change in those line items, that the administration wants to make a change, there's a process of that. Maybe, Mr. Roach, you could explain the process of line item change.
Yeah, we just did one recently. Yeah.
Where we would typically present to the Resource Subcommittee first. You know, we have a certain funding amount in this particular line item that we would like to transfer to a different line item. What we did recently and we brought to the school committee was to move $150,000 to cover the 21st century programs at the middle schools because the grant didn't happen. We were able to do that and amongst a few other things, I think we added $5,000 to four different school site instructional line items. But we go to the Resource Subcommittee first, have that conversation there, questions and answers, discussions. If it's approved there, then we bring it to the school committee, which we did. I think it was the last one in January.
Yep.
So the Resource Subcommittee is like the compliance committee? It goes through all kinds?
Any changes on how we spend the funds, it has to go through that Subcommittee.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's always presented to them first. It's always presented to them first, and then we actually come to present it to the full school committee.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Mr. Roach.
Yeah, but I think it's a good transition to some of the, you know, like Mr. Thompson said, there's the process that the schools and the sites are doing now, and some have already done it already, is to complete a site-based budget. We do that with a Google form that then transfers into an Excel document, a sheet, so we can track all the different requests and have discussions around, you know, those and what's possible and, you know, what we can move forward with. We've been meeting with the administrative teams, the school councils at a number of the schools, the instructional leadership teams, in trying to gather information in addition to providing information to the sites around our particular budget and the timelines and the process. To your point, Dr. Knight, you know, we have had the benefit, as have had all schools, of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. We've heard here it referred to as ESER all the time, although the DESI people refer to it as, they pronounce it as ESR. The first time they did that, I was like, what are we talking about right now? But the ESER funds are gone after this year. So that has been a significant, you know, well into the $20 million range of funding that we will not have. And that's okay, because we're prepared for, we prepared for the use of those funds for the exact purpose that they were intended. And so right now, we're really shifting towards the capital improvement phase of those ESER or ESR funds, or however you'd like to describe it. But we've done a great deal of investing in curriculum. We've heard and saw some of that from Tammy Chandler tonight. We've provided a lot of enrichment opportunities for students and staff. And we've done a number of other things that have helped with operating budget. But we don't have positions in the ESER funds. Those are in our general fund, our actual operating budget. And so we're in a really good position there, I think, as opposed to some other communities that I know are struggling to figure out how we're going to move these positions that we've been paying for with ESER into our general fund. And you'll see why that might be a struggle in a minute. This is the fourth year of the Student Opportunity Act. That was a law that came into place in Massachusetts. There was a lawsuit that the way that schools refunded was not equitable. It was brought by Worcester and Brockton Public Schools, who share similarities to Fitchburg. They really felt like the Chapter 70, which is the mass general law that funds a portion of the operating budget, the foundation budget of a school, was not equitable. So we've seen some improvements as a result of that. However, I will say this year's amount increase surprised everybody across the state when the governor released her budget. And the main reason across the state has been decreasing enrollment in public schools. Some good news is decreasing low-income enrollment. That's actually a positive, but it does bring fewer dollars. But the biggest factor is that inflation was down. And when inflation is down, the rates that they use to create the foundation budget ratio actually decreases pretty significantly. And I'll show you an example of that. That said, the first three years of this seven-year Student Opportunity Act rollout, the district has invested a great deal in staffing, and specifically in staffing areas that we knew for a long time we were not able to fund. So our staffing ratios are strong in the buildings, but we always have to look at, you know, the enrollment trends and the needs of our kids and to try to figure out where do we have to make investments even if the funds are challenging. We are negotiating with all the units across the district. I think most of you are aware of that. That's just another factor in the budgeting for this particular year, because we don't have contracts necessarily for the next three years at the end of June 30th, 2024. So that's a factor that we're considering. And then, as noted at the very beginning, capital projects will really be taking off over the course of this summer. And we have a lot of exciting ones that are happening there, mainly funded by the ESER funds. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
So that's a slide that describes how all, every public school district is expected to present their foundation budget. It is essentially comprised, ours this coming year of $101 million is comprised of funds from the state. Those are referred to as Chapter 70 state aid. And then the local contribution, the minimum contribution that's required by the state of Massachusetts that the city of Fitchburg provides. So that is $23,118,016 this year. So to factor our, to consider our actual budget, we have that foundation, which is that required net school spending of $100 million. We subtract the indirect costs. We don't know exactly what that is yet. So that's health insurance. Last year, that was about $10.5 million. Transportation costs, we do have an idea on because we just were able to secure three contracts, that's close to $8 million. So those come right off the top. Retirement contributions, a number of other factors that are considered to be indirect costs. Then we get to what we have left, what's available. So it should be in the 70 somewhere, million range, at least we hope. You can move forward. This shows a little bit of the sort of, the way that the budget for a community like Fitchburg, this is specifically ours, is developed.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
May I ask a question? I did a budget when I was in college a couple of years ago, and there was a certain, a small percentage that came from the federal government. We don't get that anymore?
Well, we do receive grants from the federal government, the title grants typically.
Okay.
We do have the ESER funds, the emergency, the elementary, secondary school emergency relief, those are federal funds. This is the, the foundation budget does not include that.
Without the grants?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's just the Chapter 70 funds and then what the city is able to contribute.
So we don't find out exactly what are federal grants for our titles until the summer. So we won't know that until this summer, okay?
Right.
And as noted, ESER will be completely phased out, and it must be under contract by September 30th of 2024. I think this chart actually shows you pretty nicely how Student Opportunity Act, which started in 2022, has helped the Fitchburg Public Schools significantly with those increases at the state level. The state is the red bar there, the larger one. And those have been pretty significant increases. If we move forward, though, I think one thing that is just a dis, you can move to the next slide, thank you. One thing that we were disappointed with, as was every community in the state, was we did not keep pace with the first, especially second and third year of Student Opportunity Act. So the increases to the foundation budget in year two and three was almost $8 million. It was cut nearly in half in this year. And again, that comes back to inflation rate was down.
Inflation, yeah.
Again, we think that's a good thing, but it's not a good thing for the way that our foundation budget is developed. And I think another slide will show that better. This gives you a little bit of information about Student Opportunity Act. The purpose of it really, as noted, was to provide equitable experiences and opportunities for all school communities in providing the way that Chapter 70 was infused into local municipalities like Fitchburg. We, with the requirements or with Student Opportunity Act, we do, we must account for a certain amount of that, in this case, $2.9 million, in the way that we're using those funds specifically targeted to the needs that we've identified for what we must do to support our students. And so, yeah, jump in.
That's our highest need students. So those are our special education, our ESL students, in addition to our Hispanic, Latino students. So those are the three subgroups that that $2.9 million has to focus on. So if you go back, this is our increase, 4.3 million, right? So out of that 4.3 million, we have to spend 2.9 million of that 4.3 million on those subgroups of students. So like Mr. Roach said before, we just finished up our first round of the three-year plan, right? So we are now rewriting that plan for the next several years. So right now, I'm working with my administrators, I'm working with families and getting their feedback on what they think we should be using and what we should be focusing on this 2.9 million on. They get, the Department of Education provides us with a list of like 18 evidence-based strategies or programs that we can use this money on. So right now, I'm going around to all school council and PTOs and gathering their input. I have a survey ready to go out on Friday to my staff to gather their input. We have some thinking right now on how we should be using this money, but we will be gathering input from all these different stakeholders to get exactly their feedback on how we should be using this money. That money is targeted, and we have to use it for those students, okay?
And let me say thank you so much for the work that you, both of you, put in and everybody put in into that, because, you know, it's all for the benefit of students, you know, for teaching and learning, and that's what we want to.
So what we'll be doing is, we'll be getting all the feedback. I'll be coming back with you, to you. And Ms. Cologne and Mr. Roach and I, on March 18th, will present, will be presenting to you how we will be using the Student Opportunity Act, that 2.9 million for those student subgroups for next year. We then have to actually submit our new plan to the state on April 1st. So I'll be coming to you on March 18th for, to go over that with you and what we've decided to use that money. Get your blessing, and then we'll submit that on April 1st, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Yeah, please, thank you. I think we can move forward. So a lot of numbers here. And the only reason I included this is when presenting and talking about the budget at the various school councils, instructional leadership teams and administrative teams, including Memorial tomorrow and South Street later this week, this one really has generated a lot of conversation. So when I said before about how the foundation budget is established, so you see 101,930 at the bottom, right? I boxed out one of the categories. So the Student Opportunity Act identified five areas that funds would be increased, rates would be increased, low income, English language learners, special education, but then also fixed benefits and guidance and psychological services. Fixed benefits, why? Health insurance goes through the roof every year. It's dramatic increases, and when you start at 10 million, you know, and you add 5% to it, it adds up very quickly. So they increase the amount that, all those numbers are multiplied by your enrollment. Enrollment is the key factor in foundation, in the foundation budget. Our enrollment, you can see in the top right, is 5,623 students. That's any student, any student aged, you know, pre-K to 12, that is a resident of the city of Fitchburg who attends a public school. So they don't have to attend ours. They might attend, they might school choice out, they might, and charter is a little different, but those are included in our totals. So when you take numbers and you multiply, and you get the big drivers, the biggest driver for our community is the number of low-income students we have, which is 4,100. If you look in the top left, there's a chart that's sort of graded out. The Massachusetts Department of Ed, they group every community into one of 12 categories. Group one, and it's by the percentage of students who are qualified as low-income in your school district. Group one would mean 0 to 5.99% of our students are low-income. Group 12 would be 80% or more of our students are low-income.
So we're very close to 12.
We're very close to group 12.
We are one away from group 12.
We're group 11, with 16 other communities in the state. Group 12 has seven. So we're amongst those, really, the groups 10, 11, and 12 were the communities that Student Opportunity Act was most designed to support and serve because they know that, and they heard very clearly in that lawsuit, Worcester and Brockton and others like us signed on and supported that, that we have, we have a very important task for all our kids. We cannot do it with the funding that you're providing. You just can't do it. So this, I think, does help provide a little bit of an oversight of 32% almost of our operating foundation budget really comes from the number of low-income students that we have. So again, I just wanted you to see this because I think it's important and tells a story about our community and the grave importance that we have as educators in this community and how important our budget is to support the goals that we have for our kids. You can move to the next slide. I think just last piece of information is just, it shows a little bit of the growth of the per pupil expenditure over the past three years. I know we're in year four of the Student Opportunity Act rollout, which will be, as I said, seven years. Couple of key factors. We did decrease our enrollment a little bit, 38 students from the previous year. That doesn't sound a lot, like a lot, but when you multiply it by 17,964, 628,000 is a lot of money. Decrease of 78 students categorized as low-income from the previous year. Again, that's good. That's not necessarily a bad thing, that's positive. However, it is, it is less funding in our overall foundation budget. And then we did see an increase as of our October 1, you know, formal established deadline to certify our enrollment of 35 students categorized as English learners. That is actually since increased. We'll see that tomorrow at the Resource Subcommittee. But I just wanted you to kind of see this, too, the evolution a little bit of how this funding process has happened over the past three to four years. Where we are now, I think the Department of Ed, as well as municipal folks who focus on municipal budgets, are predicting, if we just go back to that slide that shows the four charts, that shows like the 4 million one, they are predicting in '26 a similar number to '25. Again, prediction, you know, and we try, we'll try to really have our eye on the ball on the inflation rate in addition to a couple of other factors. We're always looking at our enrollment, you know, that's a very critical factor. But I'll stop there, and if there's any questions, certainly glad to address those.
Any questions on?
And usually the budget totally clears the room. So I want to recognize.
Thank you for staying.
Tonight, to get an extra special, thank you.
So again, high level on where we're at this time and the timeline for the development of the budget. Any questions? We'll be back. This is really what we'll be doing for the next several months. So, any questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Thank you.
The last item, I don't have any budget items this evening for donations or grants for us, but the last item is just the second reading for the AED policy, 5701.04. We revised this to reflect the changes since we first developed the policy, or first adopted the policy in 2011, it was 13 years old. So we updated it with current language to reflect changes in technology and practices. So that is up for a second reading this evening. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Okay. So, moving on in the agenda, we have action items, 24-360, accept the superintendent's recommendation.
We're gonna skip that one for this evening.
Yeah, and so we should, do we have a motion to hold that?
On that one, right?
Motion to table.
Motion to hold.
Rock on.
Okay, we have a motion and second to hold 24-360 for the next school committee meeting. If we, there is no objection, I will take this by unanimous consent? Okay. It is, that is unanimous, thank you. And up next, we have 24-361, to approve the second reading of the revised policy for the AED program.
Make a motion to approve?
Proper.
Motion and second to approve, 24-361. Any comments or questions? If there are no objections, I'll take this under unanimous consent? Okay, that is approved unanimously. Executive session, we do not have any further executive session at this time.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. If there's no objection, I'll take that by unanimous consent as well.
Yep.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you.